All right, I will ask for the welcome back to in-person committee meetings. It's good to see everybody in person here all separated out and those who join us via WebEx. Thank you for that. Please let us know if you cannot hear us or if we have other concerns with bringing the platform. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the Public Safety Committee's regular meeting on November 2nd, two thousand nine hundred and twenty. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Moving right along on the resolutions. The first resolution is accepting a grant award to the New York State Department of Criminal Justice Service. This is for the Criminal Justice Discovery Report. This is in the amount of $455,969. Is the District Attorney on the WebEx? Greg, do you want to give any more information on this?
Yes, sorry, I was having some technical difficulty on this end. Good morning, everyone. The Department of Criminal Justice Services is providing this grant to the Swigill County. The funds actually came from the New York City District Attorney's Office to make it available for upstate counties to comply with discovery. Ultimately, this will be for expenses that we have already incurred or are incurring between April 1st of last year and March 31st of this year. So I'm working with the sheriff and 911 to detail the expenses that each of our departments have incurred. So I think we should be eligible with the entire $455,000. We'll be able to show that we've actually spent that amount between the departments.
Okay, so for reimbursement for up until the end of the month for a year's worth of discovery. I'll entertain a motion to bring it to the floor for discussion. Motion by legislator Klein, second by legislator Emmons. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. PS2 is the resolution establishing a time and material rate for E911 to the Ephesians Department. This will be Ephesians Department services. This is at the rate of $60 an hour. And I will ask for director to approve.
So this is the second half of what we just created.
I think you have to use the mic there so they can hear you online.
Yeah.
This is the second of what we had just when we created the position. It's the radio tech. He's already been out working on county stuff, county equipment. We're working on a bunch of stuff with ABL currently. We've got some stuff for probation that we're working on, getting them up and running on mobile data. Been very, very busy with some of our stuff, but looking forward, we've gotten some requests to start doing some additional work as, as time permits to non-county agencies. So want to, you know, have that open, available. So we created this, this rate and we'll be offering it to agencies within the county, fire department, CMS agencies, law enforcement agencies outside of the sheriff's office since they're a county agency. But we can help do some repairs, do installations, removals, things like that, and try and help support them a little bit more timely than what they are getting with the current service provider and help offset our costs a little bit.
Yeah, I'd entertain a mo- motion by legislator Chesbrough, second by legislator Emmons. Discussion. Legislator Greco.
Kevin, you mentioned non-county agencies. Can you be specific as to which ones you're talking about?
Pretty much anything except for, well, I mean, we could do county highways, anything that's working off of our radio system in the county that's not like sheriff's office, county highway, EMO, fire coordinator, stuff like that. That's already a county entity that we're already paying for within our budget.
For example, just give me one.
For example, we've got a request right now, West Monroe Fire Department. They've got a new fire engine or rescue pumper that's coming in this week. They want us to do an installation on it as opposed to have the radio vendor that we had previously had a contract with do the work. Yep.
And this goes along with, I think, Alaska, our administrator or our lawyer, isn't there a necessity to actually charge this anyways according to the comptroller's office for fees such as this? Wasn't there something we ran into like highway equipment?
Oh, you're thinking of the rail on the highway. Yeah, that had to do with.
So this would be the same thing, yeah.
It reflects property of the county's cost for these services to the town, fire departments, police departments, volunteer ambulance.
Because some of them are contractor towns, they're not directly towns.
It's often happened that if it's a full-profit agency like an ambulance company, if there's equipment that needs to be purchased, they should purchase it directly because they have to pay sales tax on that, whereas we do not. Sales tax accounting is problematic. So rural metro, for example, if they needed a radio ambulance for profit, they could buy the equipment directly to install.
I believe the same is with Mentor as well.
Mentor as well.
So Mentor is the big one that, that would affect, but beyond that.
Can you hear Kevin? So if you're sitting legislator Trudell, the county attorney, or legislator Chesbrough, you have to use a microphone, they can't hear you on WebEx at all. So just so you know, in the future, okay? If there's no other questions, see any? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Stands approved, thank you. The next resolution, PS3, is awarding a professional service contract, RFP 21, for emergency management one in the amount of $23,880. And this is for Richard Watts for our radiological consultant services. Renee is here, representing emergency management. Do you want to give any brief details on it?
Good morning. Director Palmetesso did a nice job in her informational memorandum regarding this, but I will answer any questions if you have any. Mostly this year, we have a few evaluations, some of which were pushed back from last year because of COVID. Mr. Watts has worked with us in the past, most recently to assist Kathy in assuming her new role as a director during a, an exercise. He helped to make that transition and to train her for that position, as well as helped us with our virtual EOC participation for our December 8th. So he's very well acquainted with our plan and has done a lot of great things to help us make sure that we're in the best place to protect the public.
Great. I'd entertain a motion to bring this to the floor. Motion by legislator Klein, second by legislator Trudell. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Stands approved. PS4, we're actually, Chanel, did this get passed out?
Yeah, but what, Rich, is this passed out or not? I don't know if it was passed out.
Okay. So PS4 in your packet will be replaced by the PS4 that's coming around. Same topic, it's just some of the verbiage is a little bit different. This is a regu- a resolution authorizing the sheriff's office to accept a 2017 Forest Protection Cougar Cat 1A1 ISS vehicle. This is, if you are aware, a few years ago, we accepted an MRAT at zero cost to us. This is similar to that. I don't know if the sheriff is on the WebEx.
Terry, the sheriff is not. He just got called out, his brother-in-law, as a medical emergency.
Okay, so the undersheriff's now, go ahead.
Terry, I don't know if you picked me up. The sheriff got logging in, but he got a call, his brother-in-law, as a medical emergency that he just ran out of here for. So I'm not fully up to speed on this, but I do have some of the info or maybe can answer any questions if they come up.
So, so basically, the defense logistic, it's being utilized by a different agency right now. It's brand new, hasn't really been used at all, the plastic's still on the interior of this. We have been giving it, given it from the US Department of Defense. This resolution gives us the right for the sheriff's office, the right to accept this. Like I said, similar to the one we have received before, the sheriff's thoughts were, being such a geographically large county that we have, we could keep one on sort of this end of the county and one towards the northern end of the county in county-owned facilities because it does take a long time to operate and move, being that it is such a large vehicle. This will be used for, for some, just some, you know, examples of when we would use this, you know, active shooters and hostages and situation, suicidal individuals, things of that nature. So this most certainly protects our constituents, but also protects our police force in our first responders who will be going on these calls. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to bring it to the floor. Legislator Chesbrough, second by legislator Emmons. Discussion. Legislator Klein.
What?
Legislator Klein, please use your microphone though, because they can't hear you.
What exactly is this for?
What I, what I just said, they have it for.
Yeah, I think that's kind of broad because I don't understand this thing. We took a couple of years back. It was like as if we were going against Afghanistan for God's sake. I'm wondering, what is this thing for? What is our use? Because you talked about people with suicidal tendencies leaning towards a victim, a violent situation, hostage situation. What is this people do for?
It protects the people who are going up to the house. I mean, if there's an active shooter situation and they say that you don't know what they have for weapons or an arsenal in that facility and they pull up, this is your first vehicle that's going to be on the scene.
You wouldn't have a perpetrator.
Well, you very well should. I mean, I'm not, I'm not the sheriff. If it either is you. I mean, undersheriff, do you want to elaborate at all? I mean, is there any more to bring to the floor on that? John? So we have, I know we've utilized this on a suicidal event before where there very well could be some sort of negotiator involved, but if you need to have people on the ground in front of the residency, do you want to put a sheriff's car that doesn't have armored protection on it, or would you rather put an armored vehicle out in front of it? That's, that's what we're talking about with this. Terry, can you hear me now?
It's expensive to run.
Okay, hold on. The undersheriff is now able to, did you hear the question?
Well, I just wanted to answer a little bit. Again, I'm, probably don't have as much knowledge as the sheriff himself, having former ESU experience, but I believe we've used this now three times the one we have. And they're usually when we have a barricaded suspect who we know to be armed, instead of pulling up or trying to get distance, being such a rural area, most of the time, we're able to put our ESU members, pull them up and establish a line of communications to keep, usually until we can talk the person to come out, as opposed to trying to get up close to the house to communicate or to get them away to communicate. It just keeps the officers from the emergency service unit protected while they're establishing communications, and that's the way we do them now. It's usually a long drawn-out process and it's very difficult to do from a distance, whereas this keeps everybody safe and secure.
Legislator Greco and then legislator Trudell.
Yeah, just to respond to legislator Klein's comment. Well, law enforcement, you never know what you're going to come across. And to have one of these that's given to us at no cost to the county, I understand there's maintenance fees and things like that, but hopefully we won't ever have to use it. Should a situation arise where something is needed, it'd be nice to have a second one at no cost to the county to protect law enforcement as they respond to other emergency service personnel that are responding. Just don't know what you're going to come across.
John.
Yeah, because both vehicles are pretty much brand new and we don't really use them except for when we have to take them out, there's really limited expense. We do change the oil and the oil filter ourself. This particular one that they're looking to give us, it has, it's brand new, but it also has four brand new tires on it. So we don't really foresee putting a lot of mileage that we're going to be putting a lot of maintenance into these. It's just really going to be oil changes and just routine maintenance to keep it, which our garage is handling or the highway department handles for us, to keep the expense extremely low.
And the expense will be even lower because this will be the second vehicle of our size. You'll have one on the northern end, one on the southern end, let's say, so they'll only have to drive half the distance necessarily. Legislator Trudell.
I just thought it's noteworthy to point out also that in addition to being used in our sheriff's department, it is a ballistic resistant vehicle, which means that it would be very applicable to our sheriff's department. But also in the write-up here in the resolution, you'll see where it specifically says, you know, natural disasters and nuclear emergencies. I think it's important to stress that as well because these are high mobility vehicles. They're very, I wouldn't say they're agile necessarily, but they are powerful and they can get through natural disaster, you know, bridge out, the creeks up, that sort of thing, and where there may be obstacles, et cetera. So this would definitely be applicable for our EMO as well. I think we could integrate that. And I believe that the interior is sealed, so for nuclear disasters, for example, you know, where you may have to go into a situation where the air is not necessarily breathable. I believe that that is filtered on the inside. So again, there's some applicability there. And initially, when I looked at this, I thought as well, do we need a second one because we already have one? But because of the cost, because of the, the additional flexibility of being able to use this vehicle and considering it over a kind of a broad aspect, I think that this is, we may as well do this. And I think like the undersheriff said, there'll be reasonable costs with just doing the maintenance. There'll be annual preventive maintenance that needs to be done. But I would vote in favor of this resolution and I think that it is a good idea and I think that it is versatile and that we can use it for other applications besides just strictly the sheriff and policing role.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other discussions or comments on it? Legislator Klein? Legislator Klein, I did get a message, you definitely need to pull that mic towards you because they can't hear you at all, I'm sorry.
This vehicle, now, whom will be charged to drive this? Is it a particular skills, is it a need for a more like a group of people? You know, what skills are needed to, you just don't think, definitely behind the vehicle or whatever and put it behind what it is.
Undersheriff?
We've only allowed our ESU, somebody from ESU or on one of those teams that trains with that vehicle. Right now, the people that are training are people that have been trained, usually operating the fire department vehicles. And as I said, then we do also make them on ESU training days, they do some training with driving that vehicle.
Okay, let's see, okay, anything else? All right, so I am going to need a couple motions because the one that went out with the packet is not the one that we're asking to adopt. So with the, I'll have a motion to bring it to the floor. Motion by legislator Greco, second by legislator Emmons, and I ask for a motion to amend to the one that was passed out. So, motion by legislator Emmons, second by legislator Chesbrough on the amendment. So we're voting on the amendment as passed out. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the amendment passes back on the original resolution as amended. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Stands approved. Okay, thank you. We do have a bid report that we have to, thank you for that, undersheriff too, as well. We do have a bid report. This is for the fire pump replacement. We're starting to head in that direction and this is the first, while we have bid, or were you, excuse me, we allotted for it in the budget, now we have to accept a bid. There was two responses. I don't know if the fire coordinator wants to explain on this, please.
Just basically, it's bids went out for the capital project that we approved last fall. There were only, we sent it out to three different companies in the area, there were two bidders, and the one listed is the successful bidder was Metallo Automatic Sprinkler and it's for $37,500.
Okay, so a motion to accept the bid for Metallo in the amount of $37,500. Motion by legislator Emmons, second by legislator Mangano. Any other discussion? Legislator Trudell.
I just want to mention that I'll be going to the floor in favor of the resolution. I want to thank our fire coordinator, Don Ward, because the current public service has been there how many years?
It's a 1987 and it's been in that building since 93. So we, of course, would get a question, do we need a pump for $37,000? The answer is yes. And again, I appreciate the work you've done on this for the fire coordinator.
And if you look back, the fire coordinator can help me with the exact gallons, but we are losing thousands of gallons every time we're running this, correct?
Yeah, the actual pump we're running now is a 1,500 gallon a minute pump and we're probably using normally around 500. So the one we're replacing it with is electric, not diesel, so there'll be a savings there and it's a 500 to 750 gallon a minute.
Legislator Greco.
Yeah, just a, Don, the bids are so close relatively speaking, is there any difference in the, in the pump or the brand of the pump? Is there any?
No, we actually, when I compared them, that's one of the things I was looking at to see if, you know, the differences, they were almost exact, they're the same, actually the same exact pump. So I just, yeah, there was only a, I think it was 2,500 difference or something like that.
There's no other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Stands approved.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we will go into, Don, why don't you just stay right up there? We'll go right into you for your report, if you will, and then we will come back to emergency management and 911.
Okay, thank you. Monthly report's pretty much self-explanatory, just to give you an update, to let you know what's been going on since I did that report on the 19th. In the last little over two weeks, we've had four structure fires in the county, one fatality this last weekend, and two full-blown hazmat calls. So those numbers are almost time and a half again in the last two weeks.
Where do we compare with previous years such as those numbers?
We're actually down from last year, fortunately. This time last year, we had already had, I believe the number was somewhere around 40 to 45 structure fires, but we had had three fatalities. So we're down from that aspect, but about average.
There any questions on the fire coordinator's report? Legislator Klein.
Yeah, Don, is there any of these fires that were started, whatever the case it be, like faulty chimneys or wood stove applications or anything in that area?
Most all of them. So we're running, it's, it's heavy heating season, we've had some from chimney fires, some from wood stoves, electric, some of the electric have been because of overloaded using space heaters and stuff like that. So that probably accounts for probably 80, 85% of them.
Is it true or false that towns have inspections code that have to be met with that application?
Yeah, initial installation, they have to be, but in a single-family residence, once they're installed, no. You know, it's up to the homeowners. I mean, we encourage them through fire prevention and stuff to, you know, get their chimneys inspected, make sure they clean them, all that type of stuff. But in a single-family residence, there's no code that, once they're installed, there's no other follow-up.
So we don't know if the crews are cracked and you need to have a new line?
Right, the only, you know, the people would know is if they have them inspected.
Okay. I, I just wanted to note and thank you and your, your team out there because, you know, these special operations groups, I know that personnel numbers seem to go down, especially in volunteer agencies and such, but you are keeping on with your special operations. I know you're adapting to limited numbers and such and putting some together, so thank you for the effort on that and everybody who's involved with them. It's really a, a program that's necessary, being that's such a specialized program, so thanks.
Thank you.
There's nothing else with that? All right, we'll move on to, did you have anything else, Don?
Nope, that's it, I'm good.
Okay, EMO?
So I think the most notable and exciting part of this report is the fact that Lake Ontario dropped an additional four inches. It's 22 inches lower than this time last year, so we are cautiously optimistic going into this summer season. As far as the, the rest of the report, item number two under EMS with the transition to electronic patient care reports, since this was submitted, we did receive information from the region that they will be extending that deadline to January, so that's great news for our agencies to be able to have time to make this transition. And as far as our continuity of operations plan is concerned, we were supposed to have our consultant on site in January. We obviously did not do that, our COVID numbers were quite high at that point, so he was able to meet individually with the departments via WebEx and look through their plans. So we appreciate the consultant being flexible to hold multiple meetings instead of having one large meeting at our facility. So we're moving along with that one and I don't have anything additional from this report.
Okay, any questions for EMO or EMS? As goes for all departments, a special thank you to your department for helping all the rest of the departments kind of coordinate with this COVID pandemic. I know you've been the centralized hub for information and such, so thank you and your department for that, along with everybody else. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Legislator Pooley, or not legislator Pooley, director Pooley, you got to retire first.
I'll apologize, I didn't, I didn't have getting the report in because our phone system actually, our reporting software had, had an issue, which is part of the capital project request that I put in for the budget this year is an upgrade to our phone equipment, which is desperately needed because I'll throw in there that Friday night, we ended up not being able to staff 912 because of a server failure down there that we're still working on. IT tried to do what they could for us, but unfortunately, these are servers that are kind of proprietary, more towards our phone system and they're out of date. So we are working on that, trying to come up with something. Greg's done a good job trying to help us, but unfortunately, we did have to bring staff back all to 911, which wasn't the plan until this coming Wednesday, actually. We have continued 912 operations in the evening, 911 operations in the daytime since it was shortly before Thanksgiving. So I think we're in a place now where we're able to bring everybody back to 911 with the numbers being the way they are. Most of my staff has all been vaccinated, which has been, drew a lot of help with the health department and Swigill Health to help us finish up. So that's, that's been a huge thing for us as well. So beyond that, but the other big thing that we have is my operations coordinator retired as of last Friday, which he's pretty much been my number two person since I've been here, so we're going to be working on a replacement plan there. It's not going to be easy and going to be looking to make some changes with that also. But it's going to add a little bit more workload, but we'll work our way through it. So beyond that, things on the floor continue to seem to move along. We were handling everything that is coming at us and it seems like every day is just as odd as the previous day, with just weird things happening continuously, which we didn't really see before COVID. It was, you considered, you know, you'd see the ups and the downs and we're, we're just seeing kind of a go up and just kind of float right across the top, you know, as far as being busy and during odd times, so, but I think that's pretty much everything I have to report at this time.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and it is worth noting that Paul really will be missed there. We appreciate all his years that he put into this county, we couldn't have done it without him. And I was able to, fortunate enough to be able to present him with his certificate on behalf of this committee and the legislature on Friday, and he definitely will be missed. So thank you. Does the, not 911.
you know, as far as being busy and during odd times, so, but I think that's pretty much everything I have to report at this time.
Hey, thank you. Yeah, and it is worth noting that Paul really will be missed there. We appreciate all his years that he put into this county. We couldn't have done it without him. And I was able to, fortunate enough to be able to present him with his certificate on behalf of this committee in the legislature on Friday, and he definitely will be missed, so thank you. Does the, not 911, probation director have anything for us?
Not really. I mean, everything's pretty much status quo. Our staff are still rotating in the office due to COVID, but other than that, really no changes.
Okay, thank you. District attorney?
Nothing else at this point, Terry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
What the, if I may, what are the, just for the committee, what are the status of the courts with hearings and such with COVID?
The county court judges have been holding virtual appearances. Judge Hafner was just recently, last week, able to schedule a jury trial for the first week of April, starting April 5th. That'll be the first trial that we've had held since 2019. We're hopeful we'll be able to have that. Basically, Judge Hafner has jury trial scheduled, again, April 5th, April 19th, May 3rd, with multiple trials scheduled each date, so if one defendant pleads, the second case can proceed. So we have several cases that are basically, point. Judge Hafner recently started taking pleas in county court by statute and by constitutional state constitution. Those have to occur in court with the defendant present in court with their attorney. We recently spoke with Judge Brandt Brown. She is not yet in a position to take pleas in county court. She's hoping that might be able to occur in April. So hopefully, we could start moving some of those cases as well. So it is progressing. We've been running grand jury. We took a hiatus in January, just because of the post-holiday COVID numbers. But we resumed grand jury a few weeks ago. So basically, since July last year, we've been running those, and grand jury's going well. The town courts have just started to have some in-person appearances, but the court's given a very rigid protocol as to how many people can be in the courtroom, how many cases can be heard per hour. But we're hopefully getting more appearances in local courts in person, but most of those courts have actually adapted pretty well to virtual appear. The bigger issue that we're facing is, quite frankly, bail reform. Still not having defendants show up for court when they're supposed to, and COVID's made it more difficult to track those individuals. So that seems to be the biggest hurdle we have in the town courts, but for the most part, cases are moving along.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Undersheriff, I know it's kind of putting you on the spot here, because I'm sure the sheriff had a few things. Do you have anything you want to report on?
I'm not sure what he had in mind. The only thing, just to give you a little bit of an update, we, knock on wood, been very good down in the jail, keeping COVID out of there. As far as I know, as of, over the weekend, still no, we have zero positives down there, so that's not an issue. Our numbers are way up, though. I believe, I didn't get today's report yet, because I've been in meetings all morning, but I think we're probably around 140 inmates now, 45 of which are state readies, which means they're ready to go to state. But New York State is not taking inmates till at least April. So when they go, we'd be back down, probably closer to around 100, a little bit below. But we're waiting impatiently for them to start accepting the state-sentenced inmates. And because of the crowding down there, we had an issue with a larger number of females. We have, I believe it's five females housed out right now, which is the first time we've housed out in the two years that we've been here. But we had no options but to send five of the females to Madison County. So we're hoping our female count goes back down soon, and we can get them back here in our facility.
Undersheriff?
Okay, thank you, Ben. I appreciate it.
Greg, you got a question?
Is Pearl still, are they still filing technical violations? Are they still holding off on those from now?
I know it's been an often-on-again issue, and I know the sheriff calls and asks them not to, and then all of a sudden, jail tells us they are. So we make the phone call, they hold off for a couple of weeks, and then all of a sudden, we start getting them again. I don't know what the, I think we made a phone call last week and asked them to please hold off.
Okay. Cause I, I'll talk to them occasionally. If it's worth it, I'll put a word in for them if you'd like.
Yeah, because like I said, right now, we're, we're probably about 140, and our capacity is 155, so we'll be pushing it soon if the state don't start taking inmates April 1st.
Hey, Terry, I did have one more thing.
Hello?
All right, go ahead. I was just going to mention that I got a letter today, actually, from Office of Children and Family Services. We had some funding that they had withhold the 20%, and now they're going to reimburse us back 15% of the 20%, so we're only going to be down 5%, so that's good news.
Was that for last year?
Yeah, last, last couple of the payments that we've had, quarterly payments we get for last year. They're going to go back and reimburse us 15% of what they held before, so.
That's good.
Thanks for letting us know. All right, if there's nothing more, I will enter, I just want to let everybody know.
I have a question.
Hold on. The police reform meeting is 30, Thursday, March 4th at 3:00 PM. At that meeting, we will be discussing the police reform plan, and thereafter, it will be distributed to the legislature and to the public. Reminder that that plan has to come in front of the legislature for a final vote and approval prior, prior to April 1st, and we're on track to meet our deadlines for that. And thank you to everybody who was involved. I really want to take my hat off to legislator Trudell for really picking that up and putting it together and working with the sheriff and all the other agencies to put that together. So legislator Trudell, thank you for all your work on that. Somebody said they had a comment?
Legislator Lockwood?
Go ahead.
I just had a question for John Toomey. When we keep the state prisoners, do they pay us for keeping them?
After we're here 10 days, we're supposed to get paid $100 per inmate from the state. Told that that normally takes an exceptionally long time to get, but eventually, we should be able to get some type of reimbursement from the state, probably a year or two down the road. We do keep track of it and bill them for it.
I figured if we didn't get anything, it'd be a long time getting it. Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Legislator Klein makes a motion, second by legislator Trudell. We are adjourned. Thank you.